Hey, you guys, are you good? Call this regular meeting of the Southwest-looking Local School Board to order. It is January 13th at 7:18 PM. I'd like to recognize our visitors, both here and online. You would stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
We're the Watkins Memorial High School Student Council, and we are here to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here, we have a quorum, we can continue. Public participation, any public participation? No, okay. Need a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda as printed, shown?
Published, yeah.
Published?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Um, I would like to ask permission to add an agenda item. OSBA is having a training on February 8th for, um, board members that I would like to attend. Um, and the meeting will be prior to our next meeting, so I'd ask approval tonight if we could add that item in the business.
Eight, what, eight H?
Okay.
Seven Eights, sorry, seven Eights.
Seven H.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we need a new motion then?
It's up to you if we can do the motion, or if you guys, or everybody's okay with it.
Yeah, if you both are okay with that, we can.
As amended?
We are, I am.
I am as well.
Mr. Jones, want to call the roll?
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes, that passes. We have a presentation, we have the OFCC presentation by our project manager, Mr. Tenau.
Thank you. First, let me congratulate Mrs. Perkins on her performance. That's supposed to be her, her past seven years, she did a great job. I was surprised that she asked me to present the state of the game, possibly in the future. Usually, one superintendent equates to at least three or four speakers, so I'll try to keep it within. What I try to do in giving you an update is to try to have the Hill International Corporation and also the Department of Public Affairs to send documents that you can look at, catch your leisure. You can send me a message, I can get that to them, and you can answer back if there's any detail that needs checking. Tonight is going to kind of be more of a summary of the different buildings and where they're at. Of course, you can ask questions as we go through that, if you like. I cannot get the Hill tonight. It's a little early, they're used to the Thursday, and when we told them it was 13th, they were kind of rushing around to put things together. So, I'm going to try to not do this again, if you have questions, I'd invite you to come in. We're going to start at the lowest level.
You got it?
Got to get it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And this is the reminder of what the schedule is for the construction work. You're often asked when our building's going to get started, when are they going to get completed. This has been out there for a while, but it sometimes gets missed in the messages. Again, we started with the Watkins Intermediate, the Watkins Memorial High School, and that's what's going on right now. But the other buildings, the Elementary and Watkins Middle School are underway. And you've heard in the past that they're in different phases. Matter of fact, Edna Elementary is in the DD phase, and Watkins Middle School is in the SD phase. And we kind of highlight those layers. The bottom three are, they've had a little work to them, but not very much lately. In particular, the old middle school's had some work done to it, and we can talk about it. All right, let's start with the ELC. The scheduled renovation that we have for this building is completed. I would still encourage us to take a look at the gymnasium in the future. Building and grounds, you can look at that, it's not part of the OFCC project. Matter of fact, the project calls for this building to be moved down. So, we've put a good bit of money into it. I would think that the gymnasium would be the last remaining area for some attention. This past year, it's been about a year since we put in the ramp and flooring. We're coordinating the punch-out on that. As my last line said, it's one of the most important times of the project, is after it's actually built. On this warranty period in place, as you go through the punch, you make sure that you stand up completely, because it's right. Over Christmas vacation, we've been concerned about some of the flooring, and the company came in, and they talked with both Mr. Jones and I about a month or two ago, and we got them to throw in that they came in and did the first bus from on your left, free of charge over the winter break. So, we're hoping that holds up. That flooring is planned to be used in our new builds.
Okay.
Okay? So, ELC, any questions before we move to the next building? Kirkersville, right at this time, is further down in the chain of renovation projects, so there's really not a whole lot going on right there. However, I will say that both Kirkersville and Patasko, we have asked them to look for any master plan evouts. We found out at Edna Elementary that they had some problems with the HVAC system we didn't want to get caught against. We've had the architects look at that. They've told us that they don't believe there's anything that's outstanding, that should have been included in the master plan that's not. But as we get closer, again, that's two or three years down the road, you could have something break between now and then. Patasko, again, the information is shared at this particular time. So, we're running through the second and third grade. Then we're to the Edna renovation. Currently, the DD, we're in design development phase. Matter of fact, we're trying to set up a phone call on Friday to discuss the monetary information with that. We're also trying to set up the monetary discussion with the high school being run bigger than the middle school. Radon testing was conducted over the break, initial readings, and readings taken back in 2001 show that the levels are low enough, as we believe right now that a new renovated HVAC system will take care of those readings and get them below any type of dangerous level. That's still in the works. Bus drop-off pickup may be moving to the south parking lot. The initial discussion on this particular site may call for a turn lane where the parents come in. The turn lane now is located at the north end, in front of the building. That's where the buses turn in. So, the discussion to avoid putting a second turn lane, which could cost a lot of money, is to move the parents to that particular place and the buses to the B S out lot. This design in that particular area, it should work out. If you drive along Columbia Road, there's not a whole lot of land there to expand the road at the other entrance, so this is probably your best bet in terms of financial.
So, would we eliminate that as a parking lot?
Which one?
Where the, the south lot, would that be eliminated if the buses are going through there?
There would be some adjustments. We've been back there, and you could still probably get maybe 10, 12 cars back there. The buses will do a swing. Obviously, the preference would be to park out front. It also could be over-stripped, so that cars can park there after hours. Before buses get there, because buses are really 15, 20 minutes at each side. When you get to a neighborhood school, which this is going to be, it's not going to have the shutters.
Right.
They're simply going to load and go where you need to go. So, it should be a little quicker.
So, we would be able to fit all the buses on the south lot?
Yes.
Okay.
The big issue that we have is the turning radius of the buses and make sure that they stay on the asphalt. There may need to be some subtle adjustments, as it says, to the parking lots. There is a parking light in that parking lot that may have to be moved a little bit to the east. Matter of fact, maybe we would adjust both, just to make sure that there's enough turn in that particular area.
Okay.
Obviously, then that will cause a different approach. Parents would be coming in from the north side, and they would actually be leaving the north side. There would be a loop made through the parking lot. That's the tentative thought process right now. But again, to avoid a turn lane on Columbia Road, which would be quite expensive. Further questions about that? So, that's in the discussion right now. Again, we're in the DD phase, and again, I mentioned that Friday, we begin discussing this in another school board in terms of trying to get the finances. Mr. Jones and I were at a meeting last week. We emphasized the need to continue to include the school in those discussions and not to include the schools at the tail end of the discussion, so we have to evaluate that scenario. All right? We'll move on to the intermediate building. That's the new building. There's, we're going to try to have it under temporarily, or temporary dryness by March. That would mean that not all the windows are in, but it's pretty well self-contained. May is when they hope to have it completely dried in. During the drying-in time, you can obviously do a lot more work inside. Interior studs, after the wall, much more has already been done in certain areas inside. And I'll show you a snap of this particular area in just a few minutes. There's a furniture showcase this Friday. We're hoping that all the furniture gets delivered to the middle school, so the staff can kind of look at that, take an interest survey in what they think would be good for the classrooms, and then that decision will go forward and hopefully help us make a decision for the later builds and renovations too. The ball field was created to the north of the school. It's got a fence length of around 200, but you can adjust that a little bit one way or the other. Again, there was discussion of possibly bringing in a junior high in baseball and that charter, junior high softball. That's a discussion for the board, but we are getting a site ready. But that will only be a field. According to the OFCC documents, you will create baseball fields, that's a locally funded portion. Although blockwork is dominating the outside work right now, brick is also going up. And I'll show you a picture of that. So, here's the brick. You guys selected that, so here are the colors. A little, little different than in true life, but you see the various colors for the various areas of the building. Right next to the yellow is a little different shade of black. Those are both doors tile. You guys chose those to go around the front. The other black is around the windows, and the red, the gray, and other areas around the building. So, that's called mock-up. When you visit or if you'd like to come out there, we can take you to the mock-up, and you can see those in person. This is on the flat portion of the roof. There's a little flat area for mechanical systems. This is surrounded, shouldn't be too, shouldn't see it much from the roof, but there may be a little glimpse of this. But this is all the way up, this is the sun brick that's going up. If you drive by on the outside of the gym, on the ground level too. This is a picture, see where that orange curtain is in front of the elementary gym? That's where the brick is going up. We were just on the other side of that big roof on a flat area, but this is looking at it from the east. Lot has been happening. A lot of the development to the right side, the wings, if you're looking at the stem end, the music end, to the right, there's a lot of interior work being done. So, as we move around, this is the backside, you smell the road. You can see the two pods. The only portion yet really to be poured is the second floor on the right side of pod, and that should be done, they were telling me probably by next week is when it commits. Creating some really good core temperatures. So, a lot of progress has been made. This is one pod. Again, we have separated the educational spaces into these pods. There's identical levels on the first and second, and then on the right and the left side, as you look at it. A lot of work that block is probably close to being finished. If you drive by, this is a picture from late last week, and they're working really, really hard the last couple of days. This is the other one, again, it's waiting on the core. But there's work being done underneath in the first level. So, rotate around the bottom, that is the district offices with some special headrooms, and you also can see the formation of the bus entrance there.
The administrative offices?
Administrative offices, what did I say?
District.
Oh, we're building it.
That's why I corrected you.
We wanted the voters to think that, well, that'll be administrative and also the right-hand scaffolding, and it's again the bus entrance. So, a little bit of Aerial America, just to kind of give you a little glimpse of the work being done, front of the back. That area right in there with the stage is really, it was just poured this past week, and it's looking pretty nice. This is inside, again, a lot of work, a lot of drywall above ceiling being done, so pipe fixtures and things like that can be put into place. The stud work, a number of studs are in the 4'5" building. The high school has block. But a lot of that's gone up, a lot of work's been going, so things are moving very, very quickly. This is another review again, of everything. Before we move on to the next building, any questions, anything you saw, anything that you're hearing that you want to ask about? All right, well, let's move to the middle school, which is swing space. I mentioned that there's not been a whole lot of work, but we have installed a new HVAC system, which is hopefully going to help regulate the temperatures in the middle school. Well, it's been pretty warm, so.
Way, way weaker.
Okay, well, way weaker too. How about dryness, because we, did some work on the roof?
That, that hurt in the place yet.
That was probably one of the best recovers we've had. It's about five years, maybe 10 years warranty, which should get us through the swing space. Essentially, it was put on the roof, poured in like asphalt, painted, resealed, sealed up the holes, and should work for a little bit of time. The older systems, mechanical systems, again, they're always at risk, but we'll keep an eye on them. So, any questions about this? This is the one building that you will, as a board, have to make a decision again, which you want to do it right now that is scheduled to come down after we reduce the swing space. All right, the middle school renovation. And the high school, again, that's being developed. Mr. Wolf was in a couple weeks ago last month, letting you know that we're still in the SD phase. Hopefully, we'll be moving along to the DD, but it's about six months behind the other building. The asbestos report was returned. The 12-by-12 tiles and a good portion of the main hallway are, well, they contain asbestos, and also some of the adhesive. We are hoping to take that out during the summer months, and very much like the first hallway, return it to a usable look, but get it ready for the actual renovations, which would start, you know, afterwards. But we are trying to get that planned in there for the summer of 2020. There'll also be some parking lot adjustments done on the south side of the building, so that we can connect Watkins Road to the elementary when it opens up in December. So, that pathway has to be done in 2020, because the building opens January of 2021. So, that will get some prep work next, so, this, well, this summer, 2020.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Will that work to the parking lot be completed in the summer, therefore thus closing a portion of the parking lot for the fall in the remainder of the year? Or will a parking lot, I guess what I'm asking is, will the parking lot between schools starting and the elementary opening be what it is now? Or will it be adjusted between for that first half of the school year next year?
As long as we don't need to get the buses back to the elementary building and have access from Smoke or 40, 40's going to be under work at that particular time, you should be limiting any traffic back there. So, you, other than the adjustment we're making to get prepared for that road to be open, the rest of it can still be used as a parking lot.
And then, follow-up question to that. Once it does become like a road, what is the plan for the parking, the student parking that is currently being utilized in that space?
The, if you know the parking lot real well, we're looking at the very, very south side of that parking lot. It's running, as you come in, it'll go to the left off the Watkins, and then you'll just follow that all the way back. Part of an island will be removed, so that there'll be two lanes going both directions as far south as possible. Then there'll be some kind of barrier built up to keep cars from zooming in as best we can. It may just be parking lot locks and maybe cones. But that will be the only area that should be modified by that. Again, I think it would be left up to high school administration, Mrs. Perkins, to decide if it's safe and how close you can get to that traffic. I think sometimes you have to have the plan, get it in place, and see, especially with kids.
I guess my overall question would be like, is there somebody working on how parent and student drop-off loop work for high school once the 4'5" opens next year? And additionally, where are the students that are currently parking in that area, the high school students? Where will they now park? Because that lot is always full.
Right. Not speaking, I mean, I think Mrs. Perkins will be superintendent, but the loop around the building of the middle school, a lot of high schools, still high schools, should be maintained. The outer lane may not be usable, but the inside lane next to the building is still be usable to cycle the traffic.
Okay.
So, there would be, again, the backside of the, or the very southern part of the parking lot. I do believe, I don't think Mike's here, but there was some discussion about having certain grade levels parked by the tennis courts.
Okay. I assumed that's what it would be. I just was making sure that we were thinking about it. Because I know sometime, I don't typically drop my kids off anymore, but occasionally I do. There seems to be some people that come in the front, so that lane that you're talking about where the circle will happen, there's like, people are going in the other direction and then looping out the south lane that will eventually be closed now, if that makes sense. We could talk about it later, I'm just.
We can follow up on that. But there should, there needs to be a dedicated lane back to the elementary, because that will open up in the winter. In the meantime, traffic flow should continue, except parking in the very south, and that should be barricaded off, once that's ready to go. Again, there may be some traffic adjustments that, you know, you hope for the best. You plan it, and then you find out something else may work a little bit better. So, there is a plan.
Okay.
That may have to be slightly tweaked, and we have the administration to do that.
Okay, thanks.
This isn't parking, but you know, the, there is a, the practice field that is basically back there behind the high school. Is, at what point is that no longer usable?
It's going to be when that road goes through, because about 20 feet of that hill is going to have to be relocated to the north. And then the goalposts will be given to us to install at the other end, more than likely when that renovation project happens, because we may not have the equipment to do that. But as that road goes through, we're going to have to cut into that hill.
And, and, so, okay, and when, when, approximate date, can you get me that?
We can, we can give you approximate date. I can try to get that, again, that is a very wet area, so when they can get it dried out, they'll get equipment back there. All the trees are down, everything that needs to come down is down. So, it's just a matter of drying up to get through. But I've encouraged them, while I was in this role, to avoid doing anything at that end, to encourage people to drive back through there, so they've left the field and everything intact as long as they possibly can.
I was, maybe I'm mistaken, but in the long run, the practice field isn't going away forever, right?
It'll be moved to the, there'll be approximately 20 feet, 30 feet, whatever it needs to be.
There'll still be space there.
I'm just asking, is, is that going to be available in March, April, May of this year? Or is it not going to be available in March, April, and May of this year? That's my question.
It's also where the band practice is in July.
No, I don't need it in July. I just wondered in March, April, and May of this year if it was available. That's my question, okay?
I'm guessing they're going to wait to the summer months to do that.
That was, correct, correct. That was, that's what I was trying to figure out, thank you.
Try to get you a timeline.
Thank you, that's what I needed to know.
They'll be working that timeline anyways because of the collapse at the high school building.
Well, I guess just as a follow-up to her question is, if it is available in the spring and it is shut down in the summer, like, I know it's used over the summer, that's where band camp is. So, they would need to know to find another place to have camp. Like, they have a three-week camp or something like that.
Yeah, so they'll have to move that too, yeah.
Yeah, we can work together to figure out, yeah, what needs to be done, or, kind of, what their plans made.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. Nope, nope, you're good. I'm just trying to make sure that, communication-wise, everybody knows, because I think we've got a lot of people with different, no, you can't use this, and yes, that's coming, and no, you can't do this because that's going to start, and, and then in the meantime, things are just not going on. So, I'm just trying to get.
The plan is, Mrs. Perkins, tied to me, she's put some calendar that she can keep the administrative side, and then send back requests for me also to kind of curb something if we can, if we can work together as a best bet. Any further questions? All right, Watkins Memorial High School, new build, again, the site's going up. What's kind of deceiving is because the elementary, I'm sorry, the high school gym and auditorium, the classroom section's a little kind of small. But that is actually close to a football field in length. There are four of those, you know, two on the ground and two up. The very upper right side is not poured yet, because, oop, too fast. Because that's the basis of science classrooms, and they use a different type of pipe. Matter of fact, they need a certain temperature to put that together, and that's done so that the chemicals they put down, the drains, don't corrode, pipes when they break free, and you have leaks. So, there's a little more work done to that area. But again, I'll just back up, I went through it, that's the academic waves. Also, you're looking at the very front, and that would be where your building, administrative offices are, and then again, classrooms, restrooms, everything a little bit further back. I'll be there. The gymnasium, again, has a roof going up, some open spots to get some HVAC systems in. Soon as they get in, they'll be closing that up to the very, I'm going all the way to the lower left is the inside of the auditorium, and you can see that, oop, I went to the gym. That's the bracing underneath. Huge gym once you get inside of it. Again, it's, it's got a very nice setup, I believe. You know, you had bleachers on both ends and then on both sides. What I wanted to show you was, you heard from Clay last month at the, around the stage area, we had a little collapse. That's been cleaned up, and then moving forward, you can see the trusses going on top of the auditorium. There'll be a little different bracing. This particular round should take care of that issue or any issues. And again, that was a shot before, and they've done a lot more this week, pretty well all up. They've got a lot of metal being put in place. So, here again is the stage area, just to show again that's been cleaned up. Lots of bracing there on the main walls. So, things are looking pretty good. Also, showed this because I didn't know, to be honest, what a full-fledged orchestra pit is. You go right to the edge of the stage, and it's 10 feet down to the ground. Unless you have some kind of barricade, you gotta hope the kids don't go. During the normal session, there will be a cover, during performances, it's open. So, that's it. Any questions on any aspect of it?
I just got two questions. Could you go back to the first slide?
Very first slide?
Yes. We went by, I meant to say something, but I just wanted to make sure. You alluded to it, but since this is out there for the public.
Oh, that's the second slide.
Okay. We have the Watkins Intermediate School. It says for our timeline, it will be done December of 2021.
Yes.
After the high school. High school is July 2021. So, I just wanted to.
That should be 2020.
That's what I thought, but since this was going out and people could see this, I just wanted to.
Good call.
I'll make that change. You got the, you got the file?
Please.
Please. December 21st, December 21st. That's a good catch. I got confused. We get the building, and we have that punch-out period of time, and they have a little bit of timing.
Yeah.
And again, we want to move that. That was one of the two.
And they'll, and they'll move in in January of 2021, basically.
Yes.
Yes, we're hoping.
The children will start school in January of 2021.
And then the, the other question to this, could be asked anytime. The windows on the south side of the new high school. I was a little surprised at how close that classroom is to the road. Will the windows prevent noise from that road, being able to?
Well, you always know, the insulation's very good. One thing that Mr. Jones can speak of is he was always pounding his fist that he wanted very insulated windows and the walls and everything.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you could get better at windows.
Yeah, we try to get the high, you know, high quality we can afford. Just for energy savings also, but sounds, we're hoping so.
I was surprised how close the classroom was to the road.
60 feet, isn't it, or something?
Yeah, I'm there without, I've been standing out there without the walls and windows. The traffic goes by a good clip, but it really, it's not that noisy, to be honest. There's not a lot of braking there, and when the light starts and there's a lot of braking, you could increase the, I might as well. All right.
Thank you.
You said something about that, you know, wanting to make sure that day is correct.
I, I have to change my mind, I'm putting this on tape.
And mine is just a comment, I guess. Are we, can, are we putting this out to the staff?
Yep, tomorrow.
Okay, that's, are we making sure that they're just?
Mine's a little bit more extensive as far as like moves and.
Perfect.
Teachers will know, and just some things I've heard they want to know.
Yeah, and like, and maybe, maybe with the, the calendar, I don't, did, did, I think we published the calendar this week, right?
It's going out as an attachment tomorrow as well.
And maybe on that attachment, we can just mention that the.
Reasons.
Reason, the calendar is the way it is, is because of construction, perhaps, that we could maybe just note that. That'd be awesome if we could note that.
We have filled a little lot of.
Yeah. Question. Questions. So, that would be great. And that we'll probably continue to have calendars that may be this way while this is going on still. But this, potentially, this may not be the only year that looks like this. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, thanks.
It's just a bad hair. Look at him.
All right. How about request, request to speak on agenda items. Teamsters Local Four Thirteen. Southwest Looking Education Association. Need a motion to approve the December nineteenth, twenty nineteen regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Ms. Engel?
Yes. Passes. Financial report, report from the treasurer. We can get a motion to approve and then we can discuss.
Motion approval?
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Clear with the agenda is the executive summary for month in cemetery first thousand nineteen. Fairly routine month. Our revenue came in pretty close, expenditures came in pretty close to what we expected. Um, year-to-date, our revenue's one percent higher than we expected. Uh, and our expenditures are basically right on target. We're within eighteen thousand out of twenty-one million. So, we're very close to where we anticipate being. So we're actually ahead of where we anticipate being at this time as a balance. So there's really, other than that, it was really routine month. I'd be glad to answer any specific questions you have, but nothing really exciting to talk about.
All right. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Jones? All right, Mr. Jones, call the roll.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes. Uh, we have a personnel consent calendar, number six A through G. One or all of those?
Motion to approve items six A through G.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Right, that passes. Number seven, we've got business items A through H. Probably want to take some of those separately, I would think. Let's do item seven A, please.
Move approval seven A.
Second. Any discussion?
Uh, these are amounts arranged as determined by the budget commission. Uh, one thing I want to just point out, you know, when our subsidy levy comes on the ballot, it's gonna say six point four mils. Because the new values for tax year nineteen hasn't came through yet. They have now came through, through, so the actual mileage rate for tax year nineteen, once you factor twenty, is six point three mils. So it actually went down. So, it went down either way, even if it passed before, it still went down because it didn't go into next year. So, that's a good thing. And that's all I wanted to say about it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes. Uh, seven B, we need a motion to approve the resolution opposing the state of Ohio Ed Choice Scholarship voucher program.
So moved.
Second. Want to just, uh, discuss that one?
I'm not sure how much information you read on this, but recently, legislation made amendments to increase private school vouchers. So currently, we're a cap district. As of today, we've lost eight point one million in state funding. Um, parents would be able to use these vouchers, um, based on building eligibility. So currently in our district, Petascola Elementary is the only building eligible. Uh, its eligibility comes from the state report card where it received a D in K-three grade literacy. Which, as when I previously presented the report card, is contradictory to the fact that we had ninety-eight percent of our students who met the third-grade reading guarantee. So that piece of information on the report card makes our district open ourselves up to these vouchers for private schools to use. So, this resolution is for the board to support the opposition of diverting those public funds to the private schools. So if you were to pass that, Rick would then send this on to the legislation, state superintendent, governor, et cetera. Which is what school districts are asking their boards to do.
I'll just note that companies out there know this. I got a postcard in the mail the other day. Stating if my kid went to this school, then they could be eligible to.
Really?
Get one of these vouchers, so.
Yeah, we received a record class for all students in the Petascola Elementary.
Really? They talked about it at, um, actually, they, uh, one of the private schools came into our church and talked about it. That if you went to this specific district, you could, it wasn't ours, to say.
So they're taking note. I just, I think this is a good.
Well, and by being capped, it's not just that they're taking the money that the state gives us, they're taking your local tax dollars back. They're taking over and above what they give us. That's the issue with the scholarship dollars.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Greatly worded resolution. I like this.
It's just scholarship, same thing, community, school deduction, enrollment. They all take more than we actually give from the state.
Absolutely. All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
That passes. All right, item C, uh, the Watkins Middle School Course Description Guide for the twenty twenty-one school year. Need a motion to approve and then discussion of.
Motion approval.
I'll second that.
Uh, my, my question that I had with a lot of the advanced, the lan, it was just language-driven. Um, it says that, uh, for example, advanced English placement in this course will be based on criteria set forth in the gifted handbook. Do we have a gifted handbook?
We do, and we're currently revising it.
Yeah, because the last, that last I thought was we were redoing it all.
We are, and we've been actively working on that. Uh, we have another committee meeting coming up. I believe you're the speaker next.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if Ryan, if you want to talk to, or I can, I mean, this doesn't matter. I mean, we're just at a place where Ryan wants to be able to start building the master schedule. And so, we went ahead and put forth the course description guide, minus that piece, and we will do an amendment here very shortly. Okay, next month, once we have all of the gifted finalized.
Perfect.
So that will be coming your way. This just allows him to have the board approval to begin building his schedule. So he doesn't fall behind.
Yep, that was my only question.
I know there were drops in electives and additions in electives. Did it give you any more? Does that make sense? You didn't get any more though, did you? Okay. I know, that's okay. All right, okay. It was just moving things, renaming, okay, okay.
So if I'm looking at this right, and I probably am not, we no longer have an honors, it's just gifted or not?
That, we will hopefully be ready to clarify all of that at the next one.
Yeah, it'll be closer to March. Maybe even March before that's released.
Okay. So what are we approving then, now? If it's not clear until March, what is this?
The other things, the electives, the, nah.
But it's not the complete one, right? Not till March?
We're missing the gifted component, yes, because the gifted committee is not done with its work. And unfortunately, if we wait until March for the whole, you can't, we feel without the board's approval, we can't start working on any of master schedule.
Right, but what I see in here is the gift that's in here. Because it says, you, um. I'm just trying to find an example. I've scrolled too far.
All right, so.
It'll say advanced, are advanced English Language Arts gifted. So, what I'm asking is, if that's the gifted piece, is there no longer an honors piece?
It's not. Committee hasn't fully decided that yet, of what it's going to look like. But we have.
So that will be added to this then?
The gifted piece, yes. The gifted piece is there, but it's going to also be, that, that's what that description fits. We don't have that next step down.
Okay.
That's what we'll be coming back to.
So we're approving this so that we can get started with scheduling.
Absolutely.
But we'll likely be approving a different version of it later.
An amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. I was just trying to understand.
I understand.
Has there been discussion, um, for when we move into the new building? Of adding some different type of electives such as like drama? Because now there'll be a, a stage as opposed to so many of the kind of engineering and STEM-type electives. Because it seems very STEM-heavy. That's the one comment. A few parents saw this and they're like, why is there so much STEM? So, I didn't know, I know obviously we don't have that right now, but in the future, is that something we're looking at?
I'm definitely not opposed, just mentioning why this is a thing. And, and now we have a few teachers who I think would be interested. But as you stated, right now, we don't have the space. Those are absolutely not opposed to, it's space and staff willing to take on the responsibility.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
Yeah, it's good. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Uh, seven D, a motion to revise the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school calendar. To change May eleventh, twenty twenty as a non-school day for students in K-five, K-through-five grades. Yeah.
We need a motion, right, first?
Yeah.
Motion to approve. Seven D.
And I will second that. No, you, okay, go ahead.
So currently, May eleventh is our kindergarten screening day. So we're asking for students in K-through-five, um, well, kindergarten's already approved, but one through five to also not have school that day. So we can do a district-wide, um, training for PAC's good behavior to align our, um, classroom management systems. In all of the elementaries. So we'd be asking for that day so we could train, um, all of our staff through, um, a grant that ends in June. So, I don't know if, Tanya, you want to elaborate on any more of that, or?
Uh, I mean, most of you have probably heard about this program. I know a lot of our teachers use it. But our goal is to train everybody around the pockets of five or six every year. And we all know that teachers don't like to be trained the day before school starts. So if we can get training in May to allow them time to plan over the summer, we feel like we'll be in another situation to start the fall in a consistent K-five. Um, repetitive instructional behavioral strategy approach, so.
I just, I just have one question. If it's kindergarten screening day, how will the kindergarten teachers receive that training?
I actually met with the kindergarten lead teacher today. They will get it in the fall on one of their, what would have been a kindergarten screening day, but we don't do that in the fall anymore. So they will get it at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
That's the only grade level that wouldn't receive it in May.
With the grant being up in June, will that impact the cost?
We're gonna use other, we've got a couple of different grants going right now. We're pretty fortunate in that respect, so. And that'll be significantly cheaper to pay for one grade level as opposed to the four.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. A seven E, motion to approve Ginny Ashbrook as the representative for Southwest Looking Schools to the Petascola Parks and Recreation Board for a four-year term. Commencing January first, twenty twenty.
So moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
That motion passes. Seven F, motion to approve membership for the twenty twenty-one school year to the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
That motion passes. And we need a motion to approve an agreement with Garmin Miller for the final design and engineering bidding and construction administration for the new athletic building and bleachers at a cost of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So moved.
Oh, seven G. Approval, mo, motion of approval of seven G.
Second.
You ready to discuss it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are, obviously, Garmin Miller, we hired them to do the plan. But now they want to actually do the final design, bid documents, everything else, and this is their cost to do that, construction management. This will be paid out of the bond issue when we issue the bonds. Um, it's part of the cost. He quoted us already at three point seven million.
Okay.
That's why I was like, two hundred and sixty thousand?
That's not wrong. Something's not right.
They gave about seven percent.
Okay.
That's consistent with they got for the new buildings or construction project.
Okay.
So that's their fee to do everything to basically get the building ready to go to be built. And then oversee the building, make sure it's bid, built correctly for their plans or documents.
Gotcha.
So basically, that's what this is. They're looking at the building and locations and having a design plan for everybody to look at. I know they had, you know, the price may go up a little bit, um, because of the second-story storage they put in. Um, it may go up to maybe as much as four million is probably the max. So, obviously, I told you, we plan on issuing three point eight. It may need to go a little higher depending on when they get some new quotes, because that storage wasn't in there originally. It would need that storage for four halls and all that stuff up there. And it's a, it's a big-sized room that they put up there. So, um, he hasn't gotten me to find a price yet, so I'm hoping the board will be okay with that. If we have to, I'll let you know that for sure. Um, before we actually do any kind of issuance, so you know where we're at. That was our last conversation about it. It may just be a slightly more, because of all that additional storage, that'll be heated up there and conditioned and all that stuff. So, again, this is just, our other fees are already included in that calculation when they give us the price.
Can, can I ask, you know, you kind of, you're familiar enough with the design, right? There's only a couple offices in there, right? Like three? There's only like three offices in there, right?
Yeah, but I think one's pretty big. I'll tell you a couple of them are pretty big.
One is large.
Multiple coaches.
I don't know size offhand.
Okay, and. Like, there's, I don't know what the intention is, but there's nothing like where we watch films kind of space. Which seems to be problematic for teacher, for people, for coaches that aren't our teachers. Like, the Athletic Association just had to buy, no, wait, let me rephrase. They didn't just have to buy. The coach came to the Athletic Association to buy its UV for a teacher, no, a coach, who is not one of our teachers. Because he doesn't have access to a classroom. Because the coaches that do co, I'm sorry. The coaches that coach use their own classrooms. So then, a coach that doesn't, that isn't, am I, does this, is this making sense? So a coach that isn't our teacher, doesn't have access to a classroom, and therefore he can't use his, they're not TVs anymore, they're, they're smartboards or whatever. I'm not good on my technology. So then, therefore, they had, they, he went to them to get a television. I'm like, are you telling me that in this building, that man cannot get a key to a room to? to show film in this building after hours?
Yeah, I would think yes. I mean, I don't. Yeah, that would be a reason why that would be a no.
Yeah, but in the, but the Athletic Association said, okay, you know, three hundred dollars, we're gonna get him a TV, right? Because they have like a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars in their, excuse me, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, but in their account, but I'm just thinking in the. Where do they store the TV? Exactly, so now they have to store a TV someplace. And in the meantime, we're building a building that has ninety-seven lockers in it and the kids don't even use lockers because the becau- because if you change your clothes someplace, somebody's gonna take a naked picture of you, so I'm I'm like, I'm not sure we're spending four million dollars wisely. That's my concern. That was very ranty and I apologize for that. I don't like to get ranty on the TV, but do you see what I'm saying? I thought that there was a place for um like a meeting space that we talked about in the in the original, but I haven't seen the plans. There doesn't seem to be that in that room and I don't want to just throw more money at the building because I'm not real thrilled with it anyhow and so.
Do you know, Rick, is there meeting space in there, are you aware?
Not that I know, I mean, the offices, uh I mean, the office, I think this is for multiple coaches, like the big locker rooms.
Yeah. I mean, and so then if you if you, then you've got, you have to go in the boys locker room to get to the office. What if you have a female?
Athlete.
What do you have, a female football coach?
Female football player.
Or a male fo- male coach of a female team, which happens all the time.
What they do now, I mean, they still go in the girls locker room most time, male coaches, right? Not sure about female coaches for male sports. Guess what, how about you, what what are you thinking about changing?
What they do now is they use classrooms, the problem is you have multiple sports in a season. You may have, I'm just gonna go with what I know, girls soccer who has a male coach, but there are other female sports happening like volleyball at the same time. That coach can't take the girls into the locker room to watch film because the volleyball team may be utilizing it.
Yeah, with this, that won't be an issue because volleyball will be at new high school and they'll be here.
Okay.
That's why I wanted, yeah, so um but I understand what you're saying, um so we like.
Girls tennis is in the, is gonna be here and it's also in the fall, I think.
No.
Oh. Girls cross country, yeah. I'm just saying there are all, there will be cross-functional, you know, tennis and tracker both in the spring.
Yeah.
Um cross-country and I know that I have talked to several people who are excited about the number of lockers because they don't utilize it because there aren't enough, so I don't, I don't.
Maybe that's helpful.
Yeah, I don't know that, you know, taking locker space away is the right answer. However, I concur that there needs to be, I know that they made a third locker room with a divisional wall. Maybe potentially one of that, that space could be a meeting conference room, I'm not sure. But I think that's the away football, right? Isn't that what you have to have that for?
Yeah.
Well, right, but like during the normal practice week, I doubt any coach is gonna watch film on a football game night. Right. But I don't know.
I got, I know the upstairs storage room is like very big. It's like forty by a hundred or something, it's like I mean, you can, I can talk, I know you can't have offices up there because they do that.
You did. It was part, it was.
I mean, like a elevator.
That's where we got it.
That space may be big enough to hold it, if you got that much room, might as well have a meeting space up there where you watch film or something. I guess I'm trying to figure out what we can communicate back to Brian so that he, Mr. Wolf.
And I don't know, this is just me talking, so I mean, ask the coaches, but so maybe they're like, oh, Mrs. Engel's nuts, she doesn't know what she's talking about. But I I'm just, I would, this is me sitting at the Athletic Association meeting going, what? This is, this, what there's, this doesn't make any sense, I don't understand why. Why? Why can't you just go in one of our classrooms and turn on a smart board?
Neither of us understand that.
I know, I can see. Hey, but this is three ladies saying this and this is a bunch of guys.
Plenty of classrooms, they all have them.
Yeah.
So maybe Rick and I can talk to.
It's possible they could make it.
Yes, yeah, I want to communicate, I guess not overly clear, what's the, what we trying to get?
We're trying to get to see if there's gonna be a spot somewhere where teams can meet to watch film. Or just. Or have a conference or a team meeting. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. And and you're right, um looking at the attic plan now, it's ginormous. You could almost cut space right there. But if if we're take, are we, I mean, is that storage space that's needed for?
Yeah, but I don't think we'll need that much storage space.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's gonna be very, it's gonna be huge.
Four thousand square feet.
Yeah, it's 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 pretty big, I mean, it's big, it's big.
Yeah.
I'll check with, we're checking Brian's saying, but is there a way we can do that?
And did I just?
You're saying there's enough offices, not enough offices, I know that was brought up. I know these offices are bigger, there's a lot more than one person being there at a time. Like, so a lot of them have bathrooms and showers.
Yeah, I think the intent was a shared space, it wasn't.
Yeah, no, 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 and I, I, yeah, I I understood that it was not for a single person's space. My concern was just the access point being the locker room, but maybe that's normal to do that, I don't know.
I'm not sure, we can definitely ask.
Yeah.
We're trying, we're trying to Brian, get his feedback on that.
Yeah, that that maybe you need to have an access point also outside the locker room. Can we also ask Brian this question while we're at it?
Yeah.
Um is there a law that states we have to have showers? Because from my recollection, we had this conversation and nobody, including officials, utilize the showers. Officials won't use them because they're too leery of somebody saying something, a student accusing falsely. Um students don't use them because
Naked pictures.
They're gross and naked pictures or whatever. But if, unless there's a law, there's a lot of space that could be utilized for something else if we don't have to have showers. And I'm not, I'm pretty sure when we had one of our meetings prior, even the um coaches and whatnot didn't think they were necessary. I could be recalling that wrong, but there may be a a law or a rule that says we have to have them, so.
We'll find out, I mean, what's the board desire though? Officials have their own showers in this building. The upper left-hand side is the official's office with a shower in there, so officials would be completely separate from any students, players, or anything like that. Again, doesn't, obviously you have a male and a female, that may be different.
Sure.
Official. But I'll look into that, I guess their desire, take them out as a board?
I don't know. That, I mean, I personally don't know that they're necessary, I I can only speak for my personal.
So that'll be something they'll better add later on, that's what concern is.
Right.
Take them out and don't.
That's why I was thinking maybe we just ask about like the norm, the norm, has he ever done something without them? Is there a law?
Yep.
Yeah, my understanding is the kids will not utilize them at all. Okay.
I'll ask him.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions on Garment Miller and their proposal? Also, I closed the bleachers too.
What's our timeframe on this still?
Um it's in that, if you look at the attachment. Let's see, so basically the the schedule, design schedule begin in February twenty twenty to June twenty with bidding take place in place in June of twenty twenty. Construction will start in July of twenty twenty and complete in June of twenty one.
Twenty one. Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Jones? Okay.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes, alright, item eight, treasures items.
If you leave together, if you like.
Yep.
We added.
Oh, yeah, H, I'm sorry, seven H. Sorry about that. You got it, I didn't write it down, I'm sorry.
Denied.
Nope.
Cannot learn. Which which session are you attending, John?
Um it's the board leader one, just kind of um.
Is that the one we went to?
I believe it was the one you guys went to a couple of years ago.
It's a good, good one to go to.
Alright, so we need a motion to approve for John to attend the OSBA Leadership Institute.
Um I can bring my mastering your board leadership skills.
There we go.
I'll move that.
I will second that. Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Upstate.
Alright, there you go. Item eight, A and B. Motion to approve item eight A B.
Second.
Alright, Mr. Jones?
Obviously, we always appreciate donations and uh thank you, then there's one been announced certificate. Timing and getting the invoice versus the purchase order. MTI Enterprises, three thousand twenty-five dollars, so I asked the board to accept donations with thank yous and approve the two, the one been announced certificate.
Absolutely. That donation was nice for that.
Yes.
That was a nice one. Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Right, that passes, number nine, superintendent items.
So enrollment, um you all have the enrollment document. We're actually down five students for the month, but I wanted to point out because you can't tell from this document that we're actually over in first grade um by five kids, so we're paying some teacher for that overages. Um we're also sitting really close in kindergarten and fifth grade with four and three openings respectively. So um we're really tightening some of those elementary classrooms. Um so I just wanted to share that, point that out. Moving on to the restraint and seclusion report. So I think everyone has the numbers for the school year and I'll probably defer to principals if you have any specific questions on this.
Uh I'm I'm not sure I'm understanding everything here. Okay. Any questions on that? That's just the restraint and seclusions.
Right.
On the first one. And then the second one is the
Bullying harassment.
Bullying harassment. Oh, I have mine, I want more.
It's it's all on one document, but two separate.
Right. Okay, so but the, and that, there's like a historical information on the her bullying and harassment on the um on the second one.
Done with that.
Yeah.
So and if you're looking at the historical, you have to remember that in years past, we didn't do as great a job with record keeping as we have been in the recent years, so you're gonna notice a difference in numbers.
So my my thought when I was requesting that history is to see if the programs we have in place obviously are working or not. It's it kind of, if you look at, I mean, what happened from two thousand eight, two thousand seventeen eighteen to two thousand eighteen nineteen? Uh I'm just gonna pick on Mr. Brown. You know, we we had one substantiated and then we jump up to thirty-nine unsubstantiated and twelve substantiated, that that seems like a huge amount of difference. Other than, I mean, I guess we could explain it by how we're tracking.
Was I sure before that bullying, intimidation and harassment, bully?
Uh huh.
Previous, I believe you were just reporting bullying.
Just one, okay.
Yes. Now we're, those numbers will reflect all three.
Okay. Okay. And it was that, it was that super, super tight definition of bullying, right? Which you had to fit in a wee little teeny tiny box, right? And now it does not have, it no longer has to fit in that, quite that tiny box, correct? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it does fit, but there's other categories.
Oh, correct, okay, okay.
Harassment is much broader.
Okay.
The word bullying.
Okay.
Bullying's tightly though, harassment?
I also think we have many more opportunities to report these than we used to, so I think there are multiple avenues for administration to be aware of such situations.
Mr. Brown, I I know last year your numbers were significant, how do they, how are they comparing to this year?
Significantly declined.
They are declining?
Yes.
Okay.
It has been a great for some of us all around. I I will continue to praise the fact that last year's worst behavior is this year's best behaved by far. It's amazing.
I think we may be just looking at the numbers. This is just Deb Moore saying this, I think clearly we need to have a better understanding of what seclusion is in our district. Meaning we're not reporting appropriately. Correct.
As of right now, seclusion's referring to?
Mr. Brown?
Blocking, putting a student in a room and blocking them from exiting or having a student be able to choose a space rather than forcing them into a space or using any kind of physical barrier. Like a closed door that they can't open.
Is, so timeout would not be considered a seclusion?
As long as you're not physically blocking.
Okay.
Or have a a barrier to open space, but there could be an adult standing there supervising.
Okay. And then is the teacher who's blocking, is it their duty to report it that it was secluded or how does it go? How do you get a tally?
Well, we we go over the definitions quite intently, especially, it's right there in our policy. And um I just recently sent another document, it's a point of emphasis that's coming down from the Office of Civil Rights, so I sent that out recently to the um buildings. It's also talked about in CPI. So um we have varied trained staff, lots of varied trained staff, especially at the administration level. And so they, when there is an incident that would make the seclusion come into question, they they go through that definition.
Okay.
If a student is like pulled, not pulled physically, put, set, their desk is like completely separated from the rest of the class, but they're not blocked, that's not considered a seclusion. Even if it's not necessarily a positive outcome for the student. What if you're asking the parent or the teacher? Okay. That's just my question. It's just a question, so I'm I'm gonna go with that's a no because you said that earlier, okay. And then I had a follow-up question about the bullying, if you were done with this. So I wanted to ask the administration if you felt that certain programs that you'd started in the schools may have helped kids feel more inclined or empowered to come forward thus possibly um increasing these numbers a little bit. If that may have affected that, um those changes from year to year, I I'm I'm gonna reference the Rocks program potentially at at Etna or other things such like that, if you thought maybe that impacted an in- an increase at all. Because I I just feel like some of these programs are really great and kids have a voice that they may have been afraid to say some, see something, say something.
That's what it is, we we have pathways from.
That's what it is. We, we have pathways from, uh, Lake County, come in and do some anti-bullying and, uh, work with the kids with fifth graders, and created I love that the kids will come to me now. It's not a, it's not a, you're going to the office if you're in trouble. I have kids that just wanna share. I think that's helping, but it's in addition to our counselor, who does those, he's actually redoing the lesson, he's doing lessons right now in the classrooms, and the kids are already on it. It's really surprised, because they were, they were listening the first time around. So I think that stuff is really helping at Etna. I, I don't know what other people are doing, and the Rocks girls are a good resource. So if they're not willing to talk to, if a child is not willing to talk to an adult, they'll talk to the Rocks.
Right, thank you.
When? No, I wanna ask a question, but I didn't ask it. It seems that, uh, in the high school, there's been some consistent places where bullying is taking place, and I'm thinking, hearing a lot from band, and, and what are we doing with our band teacher, and how are we saying, we gotta stop this? How was he communicating that?
I think he's being very upfront with the kids about what his expectations are. We've also brought in, um, first semester, we brought in an outside resource, um, who was contracted with the district, um, to, to work with the band. You know, the band is by far our most diverse student group. It is also, um, our largest co-ed student group. Those kids spend a ton of time together, um, both inside school and outside school. And I think, um, when kids do spend that much time together and they are very comfortable with each other, we're gonna have, that's gonna be a source of more trauma. Um, and I think we're, we're continually working with them, working with the band director, um, working with, excuse me, our school psychologists and our school counselors to try to, um, intervene early, um, when there are issues. We're working a lot with, trying to have restorative conversations with kids, so we don't get to the point where it's a discipline issue. We can head off some of the drama early on, so it doesn't escalate.
Mine's just a quick question. Restraint, I'm assuming restraint is full-on CPI, physical restraint for everyone.
Yes. I think every time that that is used, or we have an administrator involved in review, we're usually on the spot participating.
Okay. Questions, anybody? Thank you. Alright, anybody else? Questions? Good? Alright, request to speak on non agenda items. Teamsters Local four thirteen. Southwest Looking Education Association. Uh, closing items, we need a motion for adjournment. So moved?
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. We are adjourned at eight thirty-two PM.